It is 10 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get our monthly meeting started. The Board of Commissioners this morning asked everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance of all the invocation.
The flag of the United States of America and the Republic of the British Australians, the nation, is beautiful, liberty, justice for all.
Just pray. God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this community, Lord. We thank you for those that are gathered this morning. We ask that you would touch over our community, our county, and us as we conduct the business of the county, that you would give us the wisdom and the guidance as we go through today's meeting. His precious name of
Okay, no changes in the agenda. I hear a motion to accept. I'm not moved. Pushing a second here, discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. It's time we'll open the floor for a public hearing on Popular Ridge Drive. No name change. Do you want to address that?
Morning. It's a new road name for Popular Ridge Drive. It's located off of County Line Road. We have two structures. Well, we have one existing structure and then we have a new structure going in. It's located in Laurel Springs Fire District in the Praters Creek Township.
Anyone have any questions? Everybody's in agreement over there and the fire chief and everything's good. Okay. I hear a motion to accept.
So moved.
I believe this is a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments?
Nobody here. Comments from the audience? Got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Thank you, Wendy. Close the public hearing at this time. We got a couple of recognitions we want to do at this time. Person be Karen Even. She would come around to the front there. Thank you, Karen.
Come on in.
Karen, thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll open the floor for public comment. If anyone has anything to say, hold to the microphone, please. Being known, we'll close the comment and move on down to presentation of the board's chamber update. Lisa Bottomman. We just move on. Okay. Financial update. April Hand, please.
Morning.
Morning.
I have a sheet to hand out to you.
Morning. This is the monthly finance update. Year-to-date revenue, and this is as of this morning, seven million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. That's about forty-six point three percent of the revenue that we should be expecting. Expenditures, seven million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. We're right at about forty-six point four percent on the expenditures. And then the approved budget was sixteen million, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The bank balance as of today is nine million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Bank balance as of one one twenty, which is about a year ago, six million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. And our unaudited fund balance is three million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Anyone have any questions?
On the unaudited fund balance, when are we looking for the audit to be?
It will be the end of January. And the auditors, I actually spoke to them on Thursday, and they are coming the nineteenth, twentieth, and possibly the twenty-first of January. We have, Cindy and I have been working on getting them as many electronic files as we can with the pandemic situation and the numbers going up. So they will be doing the compliance portion of the audit will be the main portion that they will do when they're on site, making sure that our day-to-day routines and policies are correct. And then whatever else they need on site, that's what they'll be working on.
The unaudited fund balance against, what percentage is that? Have you figured it lately?
I did not figure that. No, no, sir. I can do that for the next report, though, if that's what you'd like.
I think the percentage, and it's not an accurate percentage on the, what the actual fund balance will be, but it'll give us an idea where we were last year. If you do last year's same date like you did this, and that'll sort of let us know that hopefully we're going up in the fund balance.
I will do that for next month's report.
Thank you.
Anybody have any more?
When we spoke the other day, you'd indicated that the auditors have received, you thought somewhere around eighty percent of
Yes, yep. There's just very few documents that we're still trying to pull for them right now. They have the main things like the trial balance and the loan paperwork. A lot of that stuff they
Getting more in advance than
Yes.
Be on-site less.
Yes, they are. Yep.
One other, just a thought, is the members are looking good. Some trouble with the entries trying to stay caught up based on staffing situation. Is that?
We're slowly getting caught up.
Still not totally current.
Well, you're still not totally current on that. But I will also add to that. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Some of those numbers come in a couple of months later, like sales tax numbers. We just now got those for October. So a lot of that does stay behind, anyway.
And just one final thought, comment, was these are like monthly numbers, and now that you're starting to accumulate some history, would it challenge to back those, the history on the report?
Yeah, we can do that. I actually run a monthly report is what I take those numbers off of. So do you want like a monthly, how?
Just like on this monthly report, just put the previous month, maybe a column for each month, so that we could just see it. The trend, you know, once you
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Is that information available on the dashboard on the website?
It is. But I will tell you, there's something wrong with part of the dashboard, and we haven't took the time to call Edmonds and Associates to figure out what is going on. There is a little bit of discrepancy. So, and it may just be the rollover at the first of the year, and some of the codes didn't get rolled over correctly. But we haven't done that yet.
Further questions?
Karen, thank you.
I don't have a question. May I make a comment?
Sure.
Just want to point out that these are all good points, having those broke down. I do want to identify that if you look at your year-to-date revenues and expenditures, you're right in line with fifty percent of your, you're almost gone. You're right in line on that top column. The snapshot of today versus almost a year ago, I think, is significant and very, very impressive to see that type of number. But adding those additional details that have been pointed out, I think, will make the report more complete. And I will tell you, from a manager's standpoint, I'm very happy with what this sheet identifies.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, David Spicer. Morning, David.
Chairman and board, I appreciate you being here. And today to bring you an update, first, is recycling. As we all know, throughout the county, there is a concern about the recycling. We had some difficulties with that, so that had to be put on hold for some time. We are now in discussions with Foothills Sanitation and Recycling in Wilkes. They have given some information and some added assistance for that. So we're looking at probably after the first of the year, he asked if we could wait till the first of the year to meet and look at our facility and to give us maybe some more advice on how to take care of that. We have been in several conversations with DEQ. We're also in a conference call before last with DEQ and our state inspector for our transfer facility. They are aware of our situation, and certainly they are in favor of things that we are doing and accomplishing. They're very much delighted, I must say, that we are pursuing additional ways of recycling and taking care of a waste reduction program here in the county. So that's something that's going to be ongoing for a little while till we can completely get our numbers together. We're looking at compactors and different avenues and things of doing that. So that will be upcoming in the near future, so that we can eliminate some of the garbage that goes out and hopefully make the environment a little bit better. So those things is, again, are ongoing. So we'll continue to keep the board updated on our progress on that and make sure that we do this correctly. That way, everything is like it's supposed to be. On the facility updates, the courthouse roof, the samples for, has been taken for asbestos properties. Those samples, as far as I know, those have not come back yet. The bids for that are all going to be taken care of, and hopefully in the next few months, we'll have a new roof on the front part of the courthouse. The courtroom, we had a pre-construction meeting for the entire inside of the courthouse itself for the earthquake damage. We met with contractors there last week, and they are in preparations as we went through the final walkthrough before bids come in. So those bids should be coming in shortly on that. So they'll be submitting their bids and everything. Then we'll go through all of that. So that is still ongoing. The new courtroom in the old COA building, they're behind the courthouse, construction has begun. So the demolition was all completed. Actually, the demolition was completed ahead of schedule. So I know we have missed one day in the construction process because of inclement weather. But as of this morning, I went in and talked to the contractors, and the contractors seem to think that they are right on schedule or maybe just a little bit ahead. So that's looking good. And if you haven't been by there, the walls is up. They're working on plumbing and electrical They're working on plumbing and electrical today. Actually, plumbing and electrical and HVAC contractors is in our working today, putting back. So it's all being renovated now as we speak. So that's encouragement, I think, for the county to, this process ongoing, it's been a while. But it's an encouragement, I think, to the county to have this much ahead and the construction that's going on where they can see where the money's going. Animal shelter, I know we had some infractions there from the inspector. All those have been eliminated. So the repairs and things that was necessary for the animal shelter has been taken care of, and we have a seal of approval. So our animal shelter is up to date, and everything is in good shape there. So it looks really good. And, you know, the staff of maintenance has worked really hard. Those boys have put in a lot of time to take care of those infractions. So those guys, if you see them, you know, they need some credit on taking care of those things as quickly as they did. Our transfer facility, we are continually making improvements there. And I know if you've been by and see what I see each and every day, that improvements is being made there. They're working hard, those guys out there are working really hard and making improvements and doing things the right way. So everything's going pretty much okay out there. I know we had a little mishap that's being taken care of. So all that should be fixed and up to date, and everything's good on that. And as far as the rest of the facilities is going along just like a greased wheel. So we're doing really well with everything else. Anything that comes up, it's being eliminated. So these guys is working really hard to take care of those things.
Progress. Anybody have any questions for David?
I do.
A question, but just a comment on the recycling.
Sir.
As that conversation moves forward, if, there may be, keep in mind grants possibility, if, you know, if there's equipment or things of that nature. Sometimes there's some monies out there for them.
Yes, sir. And in our conversation with DEQ, the grant, there is a grant that will be due the first of February. So I am putting together some numbers for some things to put on that grant, actually. So that, we're pursuing one now. So hopefully, and that's a grant that thirty thousand dollars, and I think we will be required to come up with six thousand of it. So it's a pretty good grant to help us and to make sure that people understand that we are still, we're recycling. We still recycle oil, we recycle metal, we recycle oil filters. All those things is still being done. It's just that the cardboard and the plastics and the papers and those type things that we have, we have not had the abilities in the last while, well, I guess in about a year, to accomplish that. So we're working towards that goal.
And also inquire with some of the folks in high country. Possible grant.
Country, yes, sir. Okay.
For the education of the public on the old Council on Aging building. I was in there the other day, and I noticed whenever they installed the plumbing for the bathroom on the upstairs, they cut through the floor joists. Have we had an engineer look at that? Are we good? Are we going to have a problem with that?
The construction company, Colt Simmons and Associates, is taking care of getting that looked at and getting a seal of approval on that. That will fall under their jurisdiction. But I will make sure that I follow up with that.
And how are we handling the telephone that's going to go in there? Are we doing conduit? Are we going to wire it? What's the situation on that?
I cannot answer that question at this time. I will have to review that one and see what the plans is with electrical.
Don't know if we have locations, number of phones. I would suggest that we only run conduit, that we do not wire. So that whenever we're finished with this, with the telephone situation, that whoever does get the contract, they can come in and run the fiber in there.
Yes, sir.
We do have to provide them conduit.
Yes, sir.
One thing that I would add, Commissioner Irwin, you're correct. I do think conduit is a great addition to that. I can account for the engineering on the cut cross. Appeal Randall Associates is the engineering firm responsible for that facility. So anything that is occurring there, they are responsible to sign off and ensure that the safety of the structure is incomplete.
Just let everybody know what's going on. Whenever they put in that plumbing, just cut a notch out of the floor joists. So it weakened the floor joists. That's why we have to look at it. And as far as conduit, last official act is the comm chief at Cherry Point is to take a fifty million dollar building that they did not, whenever Congress gave us the money for the building, the training building, they failed to give us the money for the telephone system. So after we did the building dedication, we went in and started knocking holes in the wall to run the telephone and the data lines through. So I want to make sure, that's an area that I want to make sure that we've got covered because I've had some experience with that. Of course, the United States government and common sense, the two do not necessarily converge.
Back to the transfer station. Has any individual expressed an interest in doing the recycling like it used to be done? I think the mayor was here a couple of weeks ago and had different thoughts. And one of them, I think, that we came up with, if there's a private individual that wants to take this on as a business opportunity.
Not at this time. We have not had anybody to step forward and say that they would like to take that responsibility on.
Would like to add, we had a meeting with some town representatives, and they are willing to help out in some of those areas as well. We talked about the use of trucking, and we explored different areas with them. So I think now the town has a better understanding of where we are with the facility and the recycling and how we're going to try to get that back. And I think we have a unique opportunity to partner with them on some of these ventures as well.
One other thing, at one point, you mentioned the possibility of burning the brush that's out there. Have you gotten any more information on that?
No, sir. I have not talked to Charles lately about any of that. He's not let us know for sure if that's a possibility of doing that or not. I can follow up with him on that and report back to you.
Anybody got anything else? Thank you, David, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Put on down general business. First item is 2020 rules of procedure adoption.
Chairman, I'll make the motion to adopt our rule.
Well, second to that motion, sir.
Motion second, any further discussion? On favor, raise your right hand. I vote. I vote. Next up is telephone bids.
Chairman, I'll lead us into that discussion, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
As the board and many are aware, we have been looking at the possibility of upgrading our phone system throughout the county facilities. I'll start it back at budgeting process when there was an identification of cost incurred and what those costs related to. So as part of the current fiscal year's budget process, we included the opportunity to go out for bids on a telephone system that we felt would generate some lower cost moving forward. Did that. We received two proposals from two separate vendors. And we talked about that in a meeting. And I will tell you that since that meeting, there have been numerous discoveries. There have been, and I'll say this, you know, as easy as I can, but there have been discoveries on both of the potential vendors' submittals. And I believe that at this point, that I would suggest that the board consider rescinding the previous award vote. And the reason I identify that is to allow, I think we have three options that we can look at. I think we have an option, if we do rescind that vote, I think we have an option to have both the providers that submitted provide additional clarifications and understandings of what they're offering. I think there is some, I don't want to say confusion because I believe they each know what they submitted, but I believe there's confusion on the other vendors' portions on some of that. So I think we could look at it from that perspective. I think we should, another option is to go back and now that we know some of the more details, create an additional RFP and just basically provide for another RFP process to be in place. The third option, I think, one I had mentioned to Drew a week or so ago, is the possibility of looking at a consultant to tell us exactly what we have and what we need. And that eliminates a whole lot of the confusion about vendor specifics. So a first recommendation for the board to consider would be to consider rescinding that award bid. And the second one is determine, I guess, a chart of how we go about getting back to being able to either talk about with the vendors, prepare a new RFP, or to bring in a consultant to review accurately and provide us with data needed.
Are you finished with that portion of your report?
Finished.
With the information that Michael's provided, I would make a motion that we look at rescinding the original. Proceed with his recommendation for additional information. As a side note to that, are we looking at doing anything at the Higgins Center with the telephone system? Is that, was that considered in this? Because Higgins Center will still be our third option for a courthouse if something happens to the other two.
And my response to that is with the aggressive scheduling that we have basically indicated to the contractor on the old COA, the completion date for what I'm going to call the new court facility is March 1. And if we remember back in some of those discussions, the next time that the court system will need that type of facility is in March. So I have to believe that we have a really good plan in action to have that new court facility online prior to their use. That doesn't necessarily say we don't need a backup. Also included in some of the monies that we were fortunate to receive funding from the state was an amount of funding that's dedicated to the Higgins Center for an upgrade should we need it. And that included, you know, some electrical, some heating, some fencing and other things. So I think we have it if we need it. I think we'll have time in advance to know if we need it. I don't want to make any modifications to the Higgins Center today because I feel like that we're on a good chart, a good course for the new court facility. But I do think we'll have that availability should we need it.
My motion is to rescind the previous vote.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that motion. But I believe the discussion that we need to have as far as a consultant, and I would highly recommend a consultant on this because we don't know what we've got. To be quite frank, we don't know what we need. We're a dog chasing his tail. We need someone in here that knows what they're doing, can go through, get the schematics, find out what's out there, and go with it. So I will second the motion of rescension. And I suggest that we have a discussion about how we proceed at a later date.
And we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Go raise your right hand. I vote. Thank you.
May I clarify, Commissioner Irwin, we could place that on an agenda in January?
Discussion, yeah. But I don't foresee us, I mean, whenever I started looking and I started seeing the changes in the communication system, I'm an old copper guy and had a twelve thousand switch, a twelve thousand line switch at Cherry Point. This new technology is beyond me, and it's changing every day. So I feel that we've got to have someone that is a disinterested party, such as a consultant. So we can, I have no objections of discussing it in January and possibly hiring a consultant. But I don't foresee an RFP going out for a year because we've got to have someone come in and look at this mess and tell us what we've got and what we need, what's available to fulfill our needs, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I would like to ask us just a few questions on some of my answers. Discoveries that I've made in looking at this. Just mentioned there are numerous discoveries from both. Elaborate on any of those discoveries?
I believe...
Let me, instead of doing that, let me do it this way. One of the requirements of the RFP is walk-through of the project areas shall be completed prior to submission of proposal. Arrangements with the manager's office, each vendor was supposed to do that. Is that done by both parties?
I will answer your question by asking Drew. We actually spoke with our attorney, and we actually spoke with someone from the school of government. Although it was identified, and Drew, you have the emails, but you can correct me. The overall thinking was that it was not a mandatory.
Was it done by either party?
It was completed in full by one and identified as being completed by the other.
They were both contacted the manager's office to set it up?
One contacted the manager's office, one not contacted me.
The wording says shall. With that, you know, whichever one that abided by that, to me, is the only one that met the condition of the...
Now, I'm not an attorney. There's one to my right, and there's one with the school of government.
We don't need an attorney here. I think, I'm just bringing this out for the public because as, when you go back and dig into it, vendors we're talking about is Skyline and Ideacom. Skylines, you look at their quantity of phones, and they proposed a hundred and nineteen. And Ideacom was seventy-five for a difference of forty-four. And that's huge. And it would make me seriously wonder what, you know, exactly what happened there. And that's the reason for that question. I mean, if they had come on-site and did their own pre-visit, you know, were there that many discrepancies with Skyline? I mean, discoveries, if you say. Actually, are sitting here in the room, I would even ask that, you know, are they prepared? Is this proposal still, would it meet our need? Their proposal to our original RFP.
In addition to the number of phones, phone lines, and other quantities, there also are questions... are questions regarding the number of lines that would be paying for regardless. There are just, and without going into a huge discussion about it, I think that's what would allow us to have further discussions later on. But there are discrepancies. You know, there are, there are some that say it will take this many, there are some that will say it will take this many. And, you know, we've had responses that this won't work, and we've still got to pay for this. And I just think it's something that we really need to sit back and look at over a five-year period of time. With the exception of your hauling disposal for your solid waste, it's probably one of the biggest money items in your budget.
And then the other hack-in, once it's installed, you know, what kind of service will the vendor be able to provide? Is it a local response from, you know, locally will be involved in it? Those are some questions that we didn't get clear answers to the first time. I mean, I'm in favor of backing up and putting this out there, but I just, just thought that that was, when I went back and this came up again, and I went and after looking through it, I was kind of amazed that, you know, five or 10 or 15 difference, but a difference of 44 phones. For me, it was hard for me to fathom that, you know, one of them, a pre-visit, so.
It's good questions for our workshop, too, that we're going to try to schedule today, maybe, and then bring up a lot of that along the way then, too. Any other questions concerning the telephone bid?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't want to discount Donna. If Donna has anything she'd like to add to it, I'd certainly ask you to...
We did consult with the School of Government about that particular provision, and they said it was not a condition precedent to the bid, that it was convenience for the bidder. That, I mean, my recommendation is to rescind the bids, because it's apparent that it was more than just a number of, a difference in the number of phones. I think there were far more things that I was given information about that were incorrect on both bids, because it was stuff that we weren't even aware of, that should have been in the RFP that was not in the RFP. And to be fair to both bidders or anyone else out there, we need to be very specific about what we're asking for in a system. And that was not in the original RFP, and it was stuff that we didn't know about until after your last meeting.
Well, I mean, this motion's been taken, and I've received...
Our recommendation going forward, although I won't be here, is that before the next RFP goes out, you know, specifically what it is you're looking for. I think that's only fair to any bidder, what's being asked of them.
Anything else? Not, we'll move on down. Solid waste bids.
Chairman, I'll take that as well. We received solid bids back a week and a half almost ago. What I would like to do is in January, I would like for members, at least two members of the Board of Commissioners, be available to sit down and talk with the providers. I think it will, it will do us good. Again, we're looking at up to a five-year commitment. Do think that we will recognize some cost savings with what I have seen in these proposals. And I think that a sit-down conversation may generate some additional savings in that matter. So I would ask that couple members who could to participate in that. I know that Drew, David, myself, and possibly if we have an attorney at that time, but I've already communicated with them. We're looking at the week of the 15th in January to talk about it. If you recall, we did this well in advance last year. In March, I got a visit from your current provider, basically telling me that we were more or less stuck, because nothing had been done the prior six months. So we signed an extension. Not signing an extension this time. We're going out for proper proposals to get accurate reflections. So I would ask that you can either think about that now and come up with it, or at least we have an idea at your January meeting, who may want to be involved in that process.
Let's take it up to January meeting, if that'll be all right.
Just a question on that, of rescinding, out of curiosity, how...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, on the...
Sir. I believe county manager noted that he would like to get this taken care of around the 15th of January. I would make myself available for that if we could go ahead and set up a meeting. If we wait until the first meeting in January, I believe that'd be January the 4th, and the company that has made the proposal, that might be short for them. So if we could get our ducks in a row and get a meeting on that timeline with the members, would go forward with it, because next thing you know, it'd be June, and we'll be up against the wall again.
Good point. You can be available, you said?
I will make myself available. I'm retired to die, and everybody else is either farming or working, so.
I'll make myself available. Well, all that problem, man, so you can get it set up.
Do that. Thank you.
Next item up, the general fund, general fund budget amendment number four. April.
And I'm actually standing in for Sherri this morning. She had something come up at the last minute. This is just a budget amendment for our poll workers during the election. Sherri received 2015 additional dollars to basically pay them some hazard pay for being here during the election. They will get an allotment per day that they worked, and I believe it's somewhere between $18 and $20, somewhere in there.
To approve, Mr. Chairman?
Motion here, second.
Second.
Motion, second.
But I would ask the question, if it's all right, kind of divide it out equally among every...
Yes, she's going back and looking at the schedule, and...
And I'm curious where it came from, too.
I believe it was part of the CARES Act.
Okay.
Where it originated.
Thank you.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Roan. Morning.
Today to talk to you folks about the grant agreements between the state and ourselves and the contractors at the fairgrounds in regards to the recovery from the earthquake that we had. So I think you guys have the grant agreements in front of you. Start with the one between the state, I call it the state, but it's actually the Office of State Budget, but at any rate, with OSBM and Allegheny County. And actually, there's no action required on this particular item. It has been signed and is fully executed. But I wanted to mention, I wanted to bring it up for you guys to see it, to see the numbers at the end, were right around $1.2 million. That money includes all the funding for the courthouse and everything that's going on there, for the temporary housing that's ongoing right now at the fairgrounds, and for some other things, and a contingency. So, again, that budget or that grant agreement is executed in place, and it's all the things that, you know, we've talked about throughout the whole process. It came to me with my name on it, asking for my signature, and after some discussions with Mr. Carter, we made the decision, just go ahead and sign it and send it on. So...
Chairman, I will make a motion that we accept both grants.
A motion here, second.
Never turn down free money.
Exactly.
I second.
Do want to mention in the second one, and it's actually, this agreement is between the state and the contractor. We won't actually handle that money. They're going to pay them directly. The one caveat to that is that the state wants us, or is requiring for us, to give the town to convey them an easement to be able to access that sewer line, nothing further.
They're digging holes in the ground right now.
Yeah, they're out there digging now, and they said, well, you know...
Are we going to tell them to fill the holes up? Pipe!
The pipe's already in there, too, so. It's a wonderful project.
I called the motion, before we talk ourselves out of money.
I think that's a great project. I think, you know, it's being, it's being funded by the state for the immediate need to provide, you know, sanitary facilities for those folks. But that's going to service the county and the town for, from now on, and really be an asset to us. So, you know, I think if we need to give them access, and the town's going to maintain the sewer line, it actually will become property of the town and not us, so.
Project.
Dana is handling the finances.
That's right. It's all the financial things are being run through the OSBM office, and it's coming directly out of Raleigh, so.
He's got a question there.
We've had a motion and a second. Is this two parts to that?
Did we get the part about the town?
I made the motion for both grants.
Both grants, okay. That'll cover that. Both, both.
A question is, does the town currently have any easements for that sewer line from where it starts?
It's my understanding that they do currently have an easement, somewhere up around the black building up in there someplace, coming through the fairgrounds and through the training grounds, and then wherever it goes from there.
They do have an easement?
That's correct, on that side over there. So it'll have to be surveyed, and I think Kevin that works for the town can do that for them at no cost. So they're going to survey off whatever that is, and then, of course, that easement will be recorded, you know.
And that'll be on the left-hand side?
That's right, on the 21 side.
Where the trailers used to be.
On the 21 side, yeah.
Yeah. Then where does it, where does it go in and hook up to the, to the main sewer line?
It's going to go down that road, kind of. If you came in from where the big sign, the marquee is at, that line will go down that road, and then it'll cross into what we call the old almond trout place, I guess, is what you call it. It'll actually go right beside the road in the head wall that goes over the creek. They're going to bury it. They've got just enough room to kind of sneak it through there. And then they're going, they're putting in a manhole, and they're going to connect it just on the other side of that gate that remains locked most of the time.
The town's also got an easement over, because there's a dump station over in front of the concession stand and a clean-out.
And actually, part of this project is going to incorporate a new dump station that will not be offensive to the folks that are getting their nachos and cheeseburgers, so.
They're going to do away with the, the one that's by the concession stand.
I guess that'll be up to us if we want to cap it off and cover it, but, I mean, we won't need it anymore, so.
Hey, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Daniel. Next up, the transfer station closing early on Christmas Eve.
And I can handle that real quickly. As we're all aware, 24th of this week is a Thursday, and that happens to correspond with the later hours that the transfer facility is open. In an attempt to give those individuals a little more time with their family on Christmas Eve, I'd like to ask the board to consider closing it at 5:00 as opposed to the normal 7:00 for the 24th.
Need a motion on that?
A motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Will be properly advertised, I take it.
Sir.
Over on the transfer station, is it open New Year's Day, that holiday? Will it be open or closed? Open?
We've got state holiday.
State holiday.
Christmas, Thanksgiving, so it'll be open. Open. Lot of questions about that a lot of times. Next up is a surplus resolution for the AIM van.
Tiffany wants to surplus a van, and since the state of North Carolina pays for 90% of that, it's stipulated that it has to go into a sealed bid process. So we need to declare it surplus and then approve Tiffany to start that sealed bid.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion here, second. Mark second is over. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask, are we going to take up this Blue Ridge Opportunity Commission? Are we going to take it, sir? Why do we have it?
That will be at the...
It's January meeting?
It's just a lot to go over, so they give it to you.
I'm interesting, I'm very interested in the one-year WACC program. I think that's a misspelling.
Okay.
I never knew we had a WACC program. Thank you.
Under consent agenda, Ms. Rita Miller, tax administrator. Morning.
Morning. On your consent agendas, our normal refunds, releases, tax collection report, going on down the license plate month-end report, we just got that information in the mail this morning, and the compensation for last month's was $3,083.63. And then I had one request for approval of a late, it was an audit on an elderly or disability application. Took a while to get in touch with the person because of a health situation, had been out of town, so we finally got all the information back in. Had it been time we filed, it would have been approved. So I'm bringing it forward to ask if the board's approval of the late application.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so we've redacted a portion of the name, correct?
We have.
You're not asking us to just use the last name?
No, sir. And that information's all in our office.
Have no objections, Mr. Chairman, and would make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to here, second. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I must admit, that's a recommendation to...
That is how the board has previously approved those.
Yeah.
stated that it would have been approved if it had been...
Do the vote again, I didn't catch your hands. All in favor? A vote.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Moving on down, county managers' comments.
Chairman, these are, these are pretty easy this time. You have a November building inspection report that I would encourage you to look over. Item that I do want to mention is, as you recall, last year, we started a budget committee to assist and review and understanding and support the budget season that is fast upon us. I would, I would like to ask, first of all, that we consider setting February 19th of 2021 at the close of business for your budget submittal deadline. That will allow us the remaining week of February to put items together in presentable fashion, and then begin our process in March. And if you recall, last year, and I only have last year to go on, but I think last year, the budget process went well. I think it was a different approach than what had normally been taken here. We adopted our budget well before the end of the fiscal year, and that made, in my opinion, life much better. So in addition to that, I would ask you to consider setting that as the deadline, and I would like for you to start considering the two members that, I would like to continue with the committee, and I'd like for you to start considering the two members that could serve on that committee. I will identify upfront, that committee meets regularly, twice a week, and I believe last year, we would run anywhere from three to four hours in a sitting. So it is a committee from whomever that committee is, and it runs right up through, depending on the headaches and the challenges that come with it, it could run right up through May. So you're looking at probably three and a half months of twice a weeks, and there we go.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, last year, it was the chairman and the vice chairman, under, that was your recommendation, and I would certainly like to be on that committee this year.
Mr. Chairman, I know that you're farming. I'm available. I would like to sit on that chair, on that committee also, sir.
Take all this consideration and take that up at the first of the year, and that'll give everybody plenty of time to prepare.
Do you, do you want us to set the 19th?
I would like to have a date now, so... I, I would like to have a date now so we can go ahead and get that out.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Pushing later for the 19th for the budget deadline, submit the budgets.
The budget submission.
Submission. Here a second.
I would second that and add that we get, what is this, possible?
Go out this week. And, and here's my approach to it. I, I made this comment in last year's meeting. If there's a department out there that hasn't started working on their next year's budget yet, should have been, because they know it's time, there shouldn't be a delay, it shouldn't be a surprise, let's get it in here and get it done.
Got a motion for February 19th thing we did, we have a second.
We have a second.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Comments? Go ahead, Mr. John.
Merry Christmas. Make sure it's safe for those of you that have not been through a winter storm in Allegheny County and those of us that were around in 1960. I understand we got a storm coming in, please be careful. Merry Christmas and I guess a Happy New Year. We won't be about until after New Year.
That's right.
And goodbye 2020, and may you never come again. God bless. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd also like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe, and see you next year.
You have the same here. Merry Christmas and, and a Happy New Year, and it's been a trying year for all of us involved and everywhere. Ain't nobody escaped 2020. I don't care where you are in one way or another, but everything's come along and the earthquake and the pandemic, and we've all come through all this, and hopefully we can get through Christmas without getting COVID and all that stuff. Well, I would like to stress, try to do the three Ws, wear your mask and wash your hands and then stay six foot apart and just try to stay safe as you can stay. That's all we can do. Merry Christmas, everybody, and God bless our county and God bless our country, and it's a great place to be. Thank you. Bobby.
A couple of things that I think people ought to recognize, and I'm sure people that live here have recognized, how beautiful the town looks at nighttime. I know a lot of different organizations have donated roping, trees, some of the lights. Sparta's never looked better. I think there's two locations that are going downhill instead of uphill, and I hope the town can take care of those pretty soon. But overall, you, I don't think you can find a nicer looking town than Sparta is right now. You get out in the country, there's a lot of places that have a lot of lights in these, in people's farms, their houses, the yards, they look all great. Obviously, Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year. And just one thing I'd ask for, Michael, I've, I've talked to you before about the county purchasing gasoline at some of the locations. If we could have an update on how that's priced out and how that's done, I would appreciate it. And just all my board members, it's been a good year. The people in the county have been served well by the county employees. They've done a stellar job. They've been over backwards, taken abuse from some people about the way we handled COVID, but we've done the best, I think, that we could, and we've, we've made, made progress. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Beginning of 2020, I don't often burn the midnight oil, but I think I'll try to set up this year, not to watch the new year come in, but to make sure that this year goes out. It's been a very challenging year, and on that note, I just, I want to thank my fellow commissioners for the service, the county, manager's office. I know that you've, you've got a mountain of things on your plate and then add on to it the pandemic, and the turnover in staff, one of them sitting here, done, I think, a hang-up job in the maintenance, among others. We've got a lot of great folks, county staff, and all the agencies, the nonprofits, the individuals that work tirelessly to make this county and this community a better, truly a better place to live. Just thank everyone of you. Everybody, Merry Christmas and try to be safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I want to back up one little comment here. The Bobby's mentioned Main Street does look beautiful up there. The tree on the courthouse lawn that was given from the Allegheny Tree Grower Association, they donated that, and some of the school folks, I don't remember which one, Ag Department, I guess, put that up and taking care of it, but it's really pretty, we appreciate it. If you got last-minute shopping, do visit Main Street up here. They got a lot of stuff up through town, up there in the shops, and you'll find something. I feel sure if you, if you, if you can stop in and check them out. That's all I have. Have a request for a closed session.
You need a motion to go into closed session for legal, sir?
We do.
So moved.
A motion in a second. Second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Provided there's a break.